Thank you very much to everyone. Why are you being up to be burned in the back of the ring?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you very, very much for taking time out of the middle of your day. If you're scheduled anything like mine, this is a really tough feat to get out of your office, come over here for an hour and listen to this. So, thank you for breaking away from all of your other commitments. I'm going to try to run through some slides. I know this meeting is scheduled for ninety minutes to talk with Mr. Cohen. We'd like to try to keep it to more like about sixty minutes. I don't know if you have any stage you want to schedule, so I'll do about twenty or twenty-three slides. The images that you're going to see come straight out of our master plan, which is really in the final draft form, is a couple of maps and a couple of words here and there that I want Sasaki, who is our master planner, to really tweak before I make this available to the public. But I want you to know that the images that we see today come right out of this document. It's pretty much a summary in the twenty or so slides of what's in our current 2018 master plan. A quick word about my background. I've lived in Columbia now twenty-seven years. First of nineteen, I was actually in private practice as a partner in an architectural firm. And in the last eight, I've had the fortune of being associated with the university as their university architect. As I mentioned, my name is Derek Warner. And it's given me an opportunity to sort of be in the business community as well as as being a part of the university. And for a long while now, I have felt that the university as a flagship university in the city of Columbia benefited enormously from the presence of each other. There is no doubt in my mind that the University of South Carolina is more attractive because of the quality of life that the city of Columbia offers. But also, I believe that the quality of life in the city of Columbia is much enhanced by the presence of the University of South Carolina. And I fervently believe that. And it really forms the basis of everything that I think about for our city and for our university. I think it is certainly fair to say that the relationship between the university and their host community, wherever it is now, has certainly evolved since the sixties and seventies. But I think both parties were just kind of doing what each wanted. Universities in general, certainly ours, did some pretty insensitive things with respect to neighborhoods. But you're going to see in some of these older master plans and underscored in our new master plan that we have now much more profound respect for the adjacent neighborhoods to the university. And I would hazard to say we've got a pretty good relationship at the moment with University Hill. And our campus village project, that you're going to see in a moment, gave us a great opportunity to work with the neighborhoods to the southeast of us, of the Hollywood and Rivers Hills. Couple of other quick facts. We are one of the top state employers. We have over seven thousand faculty and staff at the university. Our budget is in excess of a billion dollars just in Columbia. Systemwide, the university's budget is about one point six billion. And based on some data, it's probably a couple of years old now, but our students, they spend about two hundred billion dollars discretionary for a lot of money annually, of which a good portion of that goes to things like restaurants that run the hospitality tax. And lastly, I'll just say a quick anecdote to emphasize this belief that we're both better for the presence of the other. In addition to our main jobs on the university, being the university architect, and there's a lot of folks here at the university, we all have our primary jobs, but we're also all ambassadors to the university. And when I walk on the horseshoe, I'll always see parents and their child who's here touring the university to see if they want to come here. I don't let you know this now, but it's not like when we all went to college, where we maybe picked three or four schools. Students now apply to twenty or thirty universities, and they visit most of them, too. So when I see these families on the horseshoe, all they have to do is look down at a piece of paper, and I'm going to assume it's a map, which gives me the entree to go up to them, introduce myself, and see if I can help them find wherever it is that they're trying to go. And they usually do need a little bit of help, which I love providing. And then I'll get into a conversation of where are they from and maybe what major is their child interested in. But the story that I hear quite often is they'll say that they came in from out of state or out of town, they've never been to Columbia before, and they stayed in hotels and where it's best, or a mansion, whatever. And they got out and walked around at night, and they did not realize what a vibrant city Columbia is. And then they'll go on to say, standing in the horseshoe, what a beautiful park-like setting this is, and how these two worlds are so different, but they're right next to one another, too. And it just brings me a lot of joy to hear that. It tells me that the university is maintaining the environment the way we should. But you can see the love in their eyes. We have a saying, if you can get people to visit the campus and get them on the horseshoe, we kind of got them. The agenda today, I'm going to quickly go through a few slides, just giving some background on the older master plans, just one slide each. The preponderance of today will be looking at the 2018 master plan. And if there's questions, please interrupt me. So, nineteen ninety-four, the bicentennial master plan, and we employed Sasaki to come to campus. I don't think we'd had a master plan in quite a number of years. This is the old image that came out of that. And it provided a certain framework, but I think the most enduring thing that came out of that was it redirected our growth to the west and away from University Hill neighborhoods, the neighborhoods here, and said, grow more in the direction of the river. Then in two thousand and seven, I know you recall this Inavista master plan, this is prior to my time in university. I came to the university in two thousand and eleven. But there was this plan by Sasaki to privately develop the land really kind of west of the railroad cut in Gaston Street on down to Riverfront Park. You can see the different phases of that that were endorsed on the city. Where we are now, the phase one Green Street from Assembly to Gaston has been completed, which includes Foundation Square. Just here, we've gone from Assembly down to about Gaston. The second phase is going to go from Gaston over to about, well, really all the way to UG Street with the bridge over the railroad. That's been in design for some time now, and construction slated to begin late 2019, and that's part of the penny tax. And then the third phase was to continue William Street along the river. And I don't know the timing on that, but certainly it'll be after phase two. So in 2010, Sasaki came back to our campus and gave us sort of an update. There had been little milestones between nineteen ninety-four and 2010, but this was a rather complete relook at the campus. And part of what precipitated that was our expectation that between 2010 and 2015, we grow by sixteen hundred undergraduate students. We did, in fact, grow by that amount, and actually much, much more quickly than 2015. It also said that we had a lot of campus space that maybe wasn't being fully utilized. Rather than building new buildings, try to optimize the space that we have. And it also renewed the sense of integrity that we should have toward our adjoining neighborhoods. And it brought Rocky Branch Creek into the discussion. That's this greenway that you see here coming through campus. We all know where Rocky Branch Creek is. We all know about the flooding that affects the neighborhoods in the university and Lipton Hill all the way down. There was this notion that be more respectful of this environment, try to alleviate the flooding conditions, maybe even remove some campus buildings that are in the floodplain and make a greenway. That has not really been fully realized yet, but it's something that's still very much part of what we want to do there. So I'm bringing you up now to the 2018 master plan. Part of what justified the need to work with Sasaki again and take another look eight years later from 2010 was our current enrollment plan that over ten years, from about 2016 to 2025, suggested there could be a possibility of growth of about five thousand students. So what does that mean in terms of the number of classrooms we have, labs, student union space, and housing? All those things that go with an expansion of enrollment. And this growth is not unique to USC, although it's somewhat extraordinary compared to other flagship universities. We have become very, very popular in the last few years, but still you're seeing growth really on the public flagships around the country. As I said, when we get folks to visit our university, and they see the environment of Columbia and our campus, we're growing. People do want to be here. And we have some very highly ranked academic programs, of course, our business school and our engineering school, that brings both in-state and out-of-state students to the campus. I asked them to look back at 2010, see what things maybe have not been accomplished and what should still be an aspiration for us. And around the fall of 2016, we had begun working with Krista Hampton, John Fellows, and a lot of city staff with this idea that we would do some improvements to South Main Street from Pendleton down to Blossom. So we were really in the thick of working with the city in a collaborative way at a lot of, lot of different fronts. And so the 2018 master plan really reflected in what was going on at that moment with Sasaki helping us with Main Street and with the city. So the master plan continues to look for opportunities to work with the city and then just provide some guidance for other campus developments that we had going on, such as the studios of the Coliseum. I also asked the 2018 master plan, just for historical perspective, to give a quick nod to what we had accomplished since 2010. I won't dwell on this, but you can see from these numbers, the university accomplished quite a bit. There was certainly some new structures, the Darnell Moore School of Business, the Law School, and some athletic facilities, six fifty Lincoln Housing. But this renovated building number also is meaningful to me. Before I came to the university, I was a design architect. I designed a great many buildings in Columbia. I had the fortune to do that. When you come to the university, what you find yourself in as an architect is a little bit of a different role. You're now a steward. You aren't helping some new development, but you're trying to restore and refurbish what you have, because we have over two hundred buildings on our campus and over twelve million square feet. So in that eight years, at least a dozen or so buildings were taken and comprehensively renovated, meaning all the mechanical systems, roofs, windows. And it took a building that maybe hadn't had that level of work in thirty or more years, and essentially you made it a new building. This includes many buildings on the horseshoe that you would know, some of the business halls. Hamilton, for instance, you may have noticed, all the windows, even the air conditioners went out of Hamilton in 2014. And I could go on and on with these projects. And frankly, it just kind of warms my heart to bring these buildings back to life and make them healthy again for the students and the faculty. Also, we did our first public-private partnership at six fifty Lincoln, which is something new for the university. So among the more memorable things about the 2018 plan, we wanted to continue generally infill densification, meaning that we're not trying to expand and building buildings on land outside our periphery. We have to be sensitive to how long it takes a student to walk from one side of the campus to the other with a twenty-minute class change. So we would look for opportunities where we maybe have parking lots in our campus or areas that are just not sufficiently dense to expand square footage. We did look at the classroom and lab space, provided in the enrollment row. And obviously, if you grow your student volume, you have to get them from one place to another in twenty minutes, you start to think about those connections, the streetways, sidewalks, and how do you make it convenient and safe. That's another rather profound realization I had as I came to the university, was the importance of the quality of a street and landscaping on just the quality of life is really more important than the individual buildings. The campus is more important than any one building or even the sum of the buildings. The campus is what matters, and the streets are so essential for creating the character of that campus. You're going to see a rather expansive and very aspirational plan for the engineering district down near Swearingen, and we have a desperate need for student life space. So there's about ten or so planning priorities that are in this 2018 master plan. And I'm going to go through about seven or eight of them that I think are relative to the planning commission. First of all, this is the most recent campus plan that tries to project growth all the way out to about 2050. Again, you're going to see this recurring theme of respecting the sanctity of the neighborhoods, the infill that I mentioned, and also the analysis of the number of classrooms we would need for that enrollment growth was done, compared with. And the availability of classroom space in close sit, and as we build out the old law school, we think is going to provide us enough space for labs and classrooms. So I just say that the importance of that statement is that we don't see ourselves building another academic building, at least until after 2025, based on what we think right I mentioned the connections. Sasaki took a look at this and tries to determine where are people moving mostly on campus. And I'll explain the importance of these four key connectors. Obviously, Green Street has been so pivotal to the Inavista master plan since twenty-seven, two thousand and seven. It's really the main east-west connector on campus, connecting the horseshoe and Gibbs Green, and even East Campus eventually one day, all the way to the river. Marion Street is important in that it connects the horseshoe down to the Athletics Village with the campus village right here along this path, so thousands and thousands of students traverse that walkway every day. Main Street finds itself now really in the middle of our campus geographically, whereas we started over here with the horseshoe. You can see that Main Street is in the core. We think that Main Street can be improved. You're going to see some images for that. And then Catoa Street seeks to one day join the Engineering Quadrangle here with this incubator tent corridor that I think has been actually described that way, I guess, in your zoning worries. Come on. So the engineering district, just to give you some points of reference, this is Swearingen, a nineteen eighties large building there that's bounded by Assembly to the west and Main Street here to the east. This, we think about, is really a kind of a forgotten area of campus. In fact, there are streets down there that don't even have sidewalks. When our students pass underneath the railroad bridge, they have to actually walk out into the road. It's just an area that doesn't match the level of development and refinement the rest of the campus has. So when Sasaki came back in 2018, we wanted to focus them on this area. And you'll recall that some of this comes obviously from the 2010 plan, where Rocky Branch Creek would be a greenway. But anticipating that the quality of engineering will grow, as most of our STEM majors are right now, they looked at ways to add square footage with some new buildings on land that we currently own, and also actually removed a building we call Three Hundred Main, which is right here right now on Main Street. It's an old S C E and G facility, has rather enormous maintenance needs, but also is in the floodplain of Rocky Branch Creek, which the creek, as you see, comes right here. This is where we've had so much flooding in the past, we don't even allow students to park on the empty lot next to the building. So what this plan, we hope to achieve one day, is Three Hundred Main is removed from this floodplain, and its square footage is just replaced in other buildings, and we have a greenway that can be followed all the way down to the river. Sidewalks being improved in this area becomes something that looks more like what we all associate with as part of the university. You see that image up there of Swearingen there in the distance to the lab with the water feature here, that would be big flooding. And by the way, I should say, there isn't really no timetable for those buildings that you see here in the university right now, at least has other priorities. And this being one of them. Campus Village, we started conceiving this project probably all the way back in 2015, started talking to the neighbors. And this one really evolved over the next two or three years. And I have to say that the involvement of the neighbors really made this a better project, too. It became more than just buildings. It got into conversations about safety guides and how students are walking to Five Points and traffic cams and parking. I hope that when this is one day realized, that this becomes a model for university to give her the interaction. But what this will do is take the area that right now is populated by Bates House, kind of roughly in this area, Bates West and Cliff Apartments, and an enormous, like, six-acre surface parking lot that's right here. All those buildings are really at the end of their useful life. This plan would demolish those three buildings and come back and increase the bed count from around fourteen hundred as they are now up to three thousand seven hundred and fifty, and about eight buildings that are all shorter than the buildings that are there now. The buildings that are there now vary from about eight floors to about fourteen, fifteen floors. So the trick for us was we want more beds because we have desperate need to house more students on campus, particularly the freshmen. We mandate that they live on campus. And we have a lot of sophomores that want to live on campus, but we just don't have enough residents on campus beds to satisfy them. We wanted to increase the amount of green space and in landscape, like what you'd see at Gibbs Green or our horseshoe, and create an architecture that is a little bit more transitional, not ultra-traditional, but also not contemporary and modern, but something that would blend with the adjacent neighborhoods and be something that I think people would love for many decades to unfold. We conceived these to be sixty-to-eight-year buildings with steel structures and concrete floors and cast stone and masonry skins. This is not wood frame construction here. So this is the most current design as for where this project stands. The delivery method of whether it'll be a public-private partnership or whether the university will self-develop this in a traditional way is still what's being determined. We do that in conjunction with the state legislature and the Joint Honors Review Committee. And I think we're probably just a few months away from determining what that delivery method would be. And we hope to have the first phase of this done around 2022. The first phase really is this piece right here. When this is complete, then the students will move out of Bates House in Bates West and move into these buildings. The Bates buildings will be torn down and replaced with the second phase, and then the third phase over here, this lower rise, really only this four stories, whereas most of these were about six. We decided to step down the density as you get closer to the neighborhood here. We actually have also designed this in such a way that we can demonstrate there will be less cars on Wayley Street as a result of this. We're now adding parking space. We worked with the city to actually reduce the number of parking spaces required by beds, because we're finding that less students now are bringing cars to campus. Great trend, or something we very, very much want to support, that like having to care of the cars and take up valuable space. Parking decks are also expensive to build. There is one parking structure right here that has the same number of spaces that is currently in the district, and students that have the permit to park here will not have a permit to park anywhere else on campus. So there's no motive for getting in your car and driving to class. They will walk to class. And that's really one of the keynote strategies for keeping the amount of vehicular traffic on Wayley Street down to current levels or even less. We're also going to upgrade the safety of this railroad crossing there on Wayley. So that's Campus Village. Another project that I'm sure many of you have heard about is this health science campus that we want to construct over a great number of years. I was supposed to be property at the intersection of, this is Harden Street here and you see Colonial Drive, there's some land that's been set aside to do this health science campus. Part of us driving this is currently the School of Medicine with the university resides out at the BA dorm facility. We have a lease with the federal government that expires in 2030. And the government has made it clear that they need space back. They want to take this space back to serve the veterans. So we're looking at sort of a 2030 clock is counting down to where we're going to have to vacate our School of Medicine and move it somewhere else. And we determined that this is an ideal location because of its proximity to the medical health campus, and the university also has some clinical buildings over here. So we see the opportunity to create this health science campus that would have a medical teaching building first, that's our highest priority, and then a research building second, with sufficient acreage to have other buildings that would come out in the future. For instance, maybe one day, other, other programs that are synergistic with health sciences could come here and free up space in existing buildings on the Columbia campus, which, which then means we don't have to try to construct new buildings on the main campus, which is about two miles from here. You may wonder why are you worried about something in 2030? Things move very slow and cautiously at the university, along with funding challenges and state approvals. We have to start thinking twelve years in advance. Our law school, we spent more than twelve years developing the law school, so that was really actually in our front windshield right now. I also mentioned this desire to connect the campus to the Congry River. This is something as an architect I'm enormously excited about, and in fact, we hope to see in my time. The two main connection opportunities are Green Street, which we've already talked about, goes back to that two thousand and seven plan. And that one, I feel pretty good about. Block by block, we have been improving Green Street with the support of the University Hill neighborhood, which I remain very grateful to have. We were able to close the segment of Green Street right in front of Russell House, and now our students, when they come on the Russell House, they can just walk across the street. We can have functions in the street because we gated those ends. And then Phase One of the Inavista plan, Foundation Square is complete. Phase Two is getting ready to begin. So the bike lanes, the wider sidewalks, the trees are going to make that a wonderful streak. Rocky Branch is still this, this challenge out there to be realized, but when we do, it's going to be just a tremendous opportunity for students and the neighbors to ride bikes all the way to the river and then connect with the sidewalks and walkways we already have up and down the river, and also connect with the development. I'm going to show you a bit to the south here in just a moment. Also, I mentioned student union space. As I said before, when enrollment grows, the services that a university provides is amazingly broad. Those services have to grow with it. Sometime long about maybe the fifties, universities stopped being just a place where there was a lot of classrooms and people wanting to get an education. They became like a city within the city, in our case. All of a sudden, we had to provide more student health, disability services, dining opportunities, recreation opportunities. And we're not unique in this. All the flagship universities are doing this because the expectations that the students have now is just, I would, I'm certain is unlike what any of us had when we were in the eighties and nineties and earlier. We have not really expanded the Russell House since, I guess, the mid-seventies. You can only imagine what our enrollment growth has done since then. I think it's probably fair to say it's at least tripled. And so we've been studying for some time now strategies to expand the amount of space in our student union, which, what I mean by that is, student union comprises things like meeting space for the students, particularly after-hours groups, attorneys, sororities need meeting space, dining platforms that serve food that is as good as most restaurants in Columbia, if that's what the expectation is, entertainments, game, game rooms, all of those. Along with some retail and a bookstore. We have expanded our since the seventies. In fact, we now are really the last school in the SEC not to have a student union expansion. So we're focused on that. Some of the options that we're looking at is an adaptive reuse of Carolina Coliseum. We have gone as far as just with conjecture, what might a renovated Coliseum look like? So these are not plans that are approved. This will change, but all these serve to try and do is to inform people that the old Carolina Coliseum can look completely different than what it looks like right now. It could be completely reprogrammed. There is no funding in place for this, so I showed this today with this caution. This is really just sort of an artist conception of what could happen there. We're also going to look at an expansion to the Russell House to see if that's a more economical alternative than, than adaptive reuse of the Coliseum. And also the South Main Street, I'm going to come to in a couple more slides. We see that with the improvements that is going to happen, starting late 2019. We hope that private sector developments will come into South Main Street and create some restaurants, maybe some appropriate housing, other things that will create a draw for our students in addition to Five Points. Again, this is now right in the heart of our campus, as this suggests. And this is just a short distance from so many underclassmen, freshmen, undergrad residence halls, that Main Street has a chance to be something just tremendous in support of our student life needs. Another student life need that we have is outdoor recreation fields. We lag well behind all the standards of measurement that suggest that if you have an undergrad enrollment of X, you should have this number of multipurpose fields, this number of soccer fields, baseball fields, tennis courts, all those things. There's actually rules for that. And we're woefully behind in that, but you can kind of imagine the challenge that the University of South Carolina has because we're an urban campus. Our campus is still very much dictated by the original grid that was laid out by Ginyard in the seventeen eighties. And with land costs downtown, you have to go out and buy enough land to make a multipurpose field is prohibitively expensive, and nor should that really even be how urban land is really even used in our city. I like mid-rise lots of density because you create a cohesive fabric that way. When you have surface parking lots and big gaps in that fabric, I actually feel it's detrimental to the character of the city or a campus. But this, this opportunity here that presents itself, it was three hundred acres down by the river that was purchased by our university development foundation a few years ago with the thought that, first of all, it's really all of the floodplain or virtually all of the floodplain, so it's not a good candidate for any kind of vertical development, but it's ideal for intermural recreation fields for the students. So we're going to start pretty soon determining how might this be laid out. To give you an orientation, this is Bluff Road, this is National Guard Road. You can see Wim's Bryce just kind of creeping in the upper right corner there, and Gamecock Park. We'll be able to run shuttles back and forth from campus to get students back and forth from these rec fields. But we know from real data, we're using our rec fields two and three times in that intensity that we should, just because we don't just because we don't have enough. And as I mentioned before about Rocky Branch Creek, if we can get Rocky Branch Creek with a greenway one day to the river, well, it's not too far-fetched to imagine that a greenway along the river this side could link down here. You could easily ride a bike from your dorm along Rocky Branch Creek, get to the river and bike down. What excites me about this is I just think that this will be one of the more memorable things about the university one day. Because people are, oh yeah, USC, they're the people. Acres and acres of rec fields right on the river. This is very exciting. Okay, South Main Street. I mentioned back in the fall of twenty sixteen, a group with the university had this idea that South Main Street really needs to take on some of the improvements that we've seen on North Main Street. The car counts are really low on that street because of course, it terminates at the State House at the north end and it kind of peters out down around Whaley Street to the south. So you don't get through traffic on that street. It has two lanes north, two lanes south, turning lanes. And there's just very, very low traffic volumes. So as we were thinking about streets and connectivity, what we started to imagine was maybe we could reduce the lanes, keep on-street parking in most cases, but then develop bike lanes and wider sidewalks so there could be cafe seating and restaurants. So we had this idea and it came about with some input from Sisak, of course. So we started having public meetings with the various private sector landowners in these eight blocks. A number of, I guess, three or four, I guess, public sessions as we were talking about the development of the plan. And with a lot of collaborative help from the city planners, Kristin, John, and most notably, we came together with this vision of what this corridor could be. And indeed, the Department of Transportation is now engaged with this and they're working on the design that the city and the university created together. So what you have is existing up top. You see the power lines and all of this asphalt. And I didn't just take that picture when there was no cars. You can kind of just walk out there at any time and say, take a photograph. Looks pretty much like that. Again, absolutely just an artist conception of what it could be with a narrower roadway and the bikes and then some private sector development in this kind of mid-range, four to six stories, which is what the design overlay for this area now would request to do. But you can see that still we can get an enormous amount of gross square footage in this corridor. And again, please look at this purely just as an artist conception. It's just this notion that if you have some parking structures, put them more to the middle of the block. Wrap active uses, retail and housing and commercial are kind of around it. University doesn't control all this land. A lot of this is state, some of it is private. But it's just trying to foster a vision for what this corridor can become. And also, we very much wanted to keep a good sightline to the dome of the Capitol. I can even imagine when this is done, there could be times when the street could be closed and there could be much like what happens on North Side, we close the streets and have markets and plow, have street service to follow up for the students. This brings me to near the end of my talk. I wanted to just give a nod to the rewrite of the zoning ordinance, which offers this opportunity to university and large hospitals to form their own zoning district within their realm. It's called the institutional university and medical district. And if a university or a hospital wants to participate in this, what they have, what they're obligated to do is working with city staff, developing institutional development plans. So what that plan will do is sort of define the realm that we see as the university realm, fully acknowledging though that within that realm, there were lots of private, privately owned properties. There were churches, there were retail, there was commercial, there was private housing. But what would be the character of that district that preserves the things I started out talking about today, this importance of good architecture and good streets and landscape and quality design? That's what gives the university character. And we're rather passionate about protecting it because it's part of our brand is what we think makes us successful. You see, there's some of the things I just mentioned. What we would be trying to do with this I D P is to preserve that sense of building heights and scale and mass that people identify as what the university is really all about. So this, what I'm showing you here is something that we would be working on in the future going forward. But we're really pleased with the way that the zoning rewrite is going. Frankly, we all know it was high time to do this. And just the whole format and graphics of this new rewrite are so much more user-friendly. We look forward to working with the city and going through this process. And ultimately, that I D P, as you see here, would be approved by your commission and City Council. And I guess that would be later twenty nineteen or twenty twenty. I'm not sure how long this is going to take. I hope it takes some time, of course. So I tried to go fairly swiftly. That's the last slide I have. If you have any questions that you might have, I think I've glossed over something.
Any thoughts on the old Carolina Coliseum, what you might be thinking about? And after attending an event at the new Colonial Life Center, any plans for better parking and access in and out?
Of Colonial Life?
Yes.
Okay. The Carolina Coliseum, built in nineteen sixty-nine, still has one floor in that building that's academic. We still have a program in there. We're going to continue to use that floor for academics for the foreseeable future until we raise enough money to do the adaptive renovation that you saw on the slide. But what we've looked at for the Coliseum with the most detail right now is more student union space that would include a ballroom, taking advantage of some of the height that we have. But it would take the stands out of it with just about the, you've got lots of student meeting space, dining, some retail. We'd love to find some public-private opportunities there as well, companies that might come in and lease some space from the university so we can generate some revenue. Those artist conceptions I showed you are enormously expensive, north of a hundred million dollars. We have a lot of priorities right now. But ideally, that's what we would like to do with the Carolina Coliseum. It is finally completely reused, focused mostly on the students. Colonial Life Arena, as for parking, which you asked about. Part of the Phase Two Green Street project requires that the facilities organization relocate. And I don't know how many of you know where Facilities is, but if you're driving down Green Street, heading west, heading toward the river, you have Colonial Life on your right, you might remember there's a one-story kind of nondescript building there just past Colonial Life Arena. That's actually where the Facilities offices are to maintain the university. And that's hundreds of employees, hundreds of service vehicles, pickup trucks, trash trucks, every imaginable type of vehicle. It's all right there. It finds itself now in the middle of a version in Inavista District. And because of the Phase Two Green Street and the bridge over the railroad, it's really time for facilities to move. So we're also in the process of relocating facilities from Inavista. What that's going to do then is free up that land. And with the help of Derek Huggins, our vice president of Facilities and Transportation, we're looking at options of providing more commuter, student commuter parking there next to Colonial Life. They could also double for some event parking. So that's how we want to try to add parking. We have thoughts about a garage in that area, but I will tell you that as we see diminishing numbers of students bringing cars, we're trying to be very, very careful we don't build parking structures that will overpark the university in the future. And that's a trend we're seeing in universities too. We have this shuttle program that picks up people at other places on campus now and takes them to sporting events at Colonial Life Arena and football, and that has helped with the parking stress that is near Colonial Life. So we recognize that when six fifty Lincoln was developed, it took some parking at that district. And we were able to move that parking around. And I know when there are popular events at Colonial Life Arena, we try and spread the parking throughout campus and shuttle people.
You talked a little bit about, I talked a lot about the west side and the south side. What about up along Gervais Street on that northern end of the campus? Do you have any additional plans up that way? We've seen some things come through the planning commission that along that Gervais Street corridor, the university was not necessarily, you know, a part of. So just wanted to see if you can talk to some of your plans on that.
Okay. Yeah, we had a concern about proposed development that we thought was going to do a very tall building in the area. This, when I think about the university realm, I'm thinking kind of south of Gervais. And so that was a concern as it was for the neighborhood. But as far as the university developing anything along that corridor, there's really nothing in our plans. We, our foundation took possession of the Whaley House, which was sort of gifted to the university. And we're looking at various users for that house, but that's a historic house. We're not going to remove that house or replace that house. There's renovated, put a roof in that house. I don't think the university even controls any of the land that walked through there. So our growth is really going to be to the west and the south. That's why I focus on that.
Speaking of the University Development Foundation, can you tell me how the buildings and property that they currently own fit into this plan? Or are they entirely separate?
Yeah, I'd say it probably runs to both ends of that spectrum. There are certain pieces of property that the Development Foundation now technically owns, they have titled to them, that will, when the timing is right, when the university has funding, the university will acquire it from the Development Foundation, like those three hundred acres I showed you along the river. There are other financial and property holdings that they have that are not to be acquired by the university. I couldn't see if they represent, I don't even know all of them. But our foundation functions, like a lot of development foundations do for universities, they have, they can be a little bit more nimble with property acquisitions. For the university to acquire property is a long and drawn-out, steady process that sometimes takes longer than what a certain seller might want to wait. The seller wants to sell these property to the university. I have to tell them it'll take at least a year before we can get approval. So the Development Foundation can sometimes step in there. But I think they have their own mission, which is to be financially self-supported. So they have to make business decisions also on acquisitions too. The foundation was involved in the six fifty Lincoln project, and so they have an interest in that. And six fifty Lincoln did mention this, but it's just performing one hundred percent occupancy. The students want to live there. It's one of our desirable places. But that's an example of a university development foundation.
Yeah, I guess, you know, part of what I think about in terms of the Development Foundation is the situation with the Women's Club on Blossom Street. And that was, didn't seem to be handled very well. And also was not good communication between the neighborhood and the university. So when you talk about this larger plan and the idea that the Development Foundation has really, it almost seems like no responsibility to this plan and no commitment to ensuring that they develop the property that they own congruent to this plan. So that seems problematic.
Yeah, there's some overlap with the acreage of the rec fields. But the Women's Club was not handled well by the foundation. Frankly, my office wasn't aware of what was going on with the Women's Club, I hate to say. But I think it's one of those, that's one of those cases where I don't know that there was much of any collaboration between the foundation and the Development Foundation. They had been trying to sell that land for some number of years. I thought they had a deal with Ruthless to kind of preserve the building. And I learned really just a couple of days before demolition that someone else was buying it. And I don't really know what the plans are. I drive by it every day. I've driven by the Women's Club every day for twenty-seven years up there.
But I guess my concern is I hear that you're saying that, you know, that was a problem. And I think that's agreed to be a problem. My concern is the University Development Foundation is still a part of the university and that there appears to be no accountability to the plan that you're describing. And so I'll just say it again, that that's concerning. Because I, there's almost seems like no input, no, you know, come back to accountability. Or they, you know, you say they're nimble. That's great, but they also seem to have their own rules.
They are their own, they are their own organization, community fallout, I think, that they got.
Derek, are there any, what do you foresee as the development on South Main? And also, my last question is, I hope you develop and take advantage of the river that hasn't been done in this city.
Well, I couldn't agree with you more about the river.
I'd love to see development on the riverfront.
Well, we would too. That's where Rocky Branch and Greasia, I talked about reaching the river for our students. The river, everybody knows is a great untapped opportunity and resource with the city of Columbia. So I share that. University priorities have to also get to remember to be focused on what are the students paying for through their tuition. Our mission is really on campus, but we wholeheartedly support the riverfront park. Pedestrian development on South Main. The private land can be developed, I think, wherever the highest best use are by those private landowners. I just know that when you look at South Main, you have a few historic buildings that are much resorted to when you're in Pendleton. Our plan with development acknowledges the importance of those buildings to the fabric. But also, you have parking lots, surface lots, these cares and the cohesiveness of that street that is still things that have the highest and best use of that land. So part of our belief is if we can improve the street and create what I showed you in those renderings, that it becomes something designably for private development. Now, the university does own some of the blocks along that street. And one day, near the law school, we may do a building, an academic building that will contribute to the street. But as you get up to those blocks closer to Pendleton or College, a lot of that is private and some of that is state. And we are talking also to the state, trying to get them to think about what the highest and best uses.
Is that the old law school? Are you referring to the old law school?
Yeah. So, yeah, the old law school is right here. And this right now is the parking lot. We've had a thought for a long time that we would green that. And the law school doesn't make a very good edge to Main Street. Right now, there's an auditorium there that's a little funky geometrically. So maybe one day, we develop an academic building here that contributes to the facades that are on the street. Right now, I'm not doing that. But you know, there's private holdings in here and here. It's available to the mark of the season.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess if there are no other questions, we'll adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
Thanks, everyone.